Welcome to the Wednesday afternoon meeting of the B O C C. I think we'll start this. Clerk has some bid openings, so we'll just let her proceed with those.
Hi, I'm Kelly Dombrowski, Clerk of the Board. Sorry, Kelly Grayson, Clerk of the Board. I'm opening the Tower Road Water Main and One Eat Away Booster Pump Station Project, project number 2951. And I have 11 bids. The first bid is from Midway Underground LLC. The total cost to Calitz County is $1,937,139.05. Next bid? This bid is from DeWitt Construction Incorporated. Total cost to Calitz County is $1,555,950.70. Next bid? This bid is from Western United Civil Group LLC. Total cost to Calitz County is $1,581,986... Next bid? This bid is from K R Holmes LLC. Total cost to Calitz County is $2,433,433,929.96. Next bid? This bid is from North Cascade Excavating. Total cost to Calitz County is $1,710,349.41. Next bid? This bid is from Swafford Excavating. Total cost to Calitz County is $2,023,190.40. Next bid? This bid is from DeWitt Construction Incorporated. Total cost to Calitz County is $1,555,950.70. Next bid? This bid is from Western United Civil Group LLC. Total cost to Calitz County is $1,581,986... Next bid? This bid is from North Cascade Excavating. Total cost to Calitz County is $2,433,433,929.96. Next bid? This bid is from K R Holmes LLC. Total cost to Calitz County is $2,433,433,929.96. Next bid? This bid is from North Cascade Excavating. Total cost to Calitz County is $2,433,433,929.96. Next bid? This bid is from North Cascade Excavating. Total cost to Calitz County is $1,710,349.41. Next bid? This bid is from North Cascade Excavating. Total cost to Calitz County is $1,710,349.41. Next bid? This bid is from Swafford Excavating. Total cost to Calitz County is $2,023,190.40. Next bid? This bid is from Grade Works Excavating LLC. Total cost to Calitz County is $2,023,608.65. Next bid? This bid is from Grade Works Excavating LLC. Total cost to Calitz County is $2,023,608.65. Next bid? This bid is from CR Construction LLC. Not quite sure the total here. Is there someone here from CR Construction? Would you be able to...? Yeah.
Just simple operator, I had no idea.
Might have to get some clarification on that. This will have to be corrected per the specs, but it's over a $2 million bid. Next bid? This will have to be corrected per the specs, but it's over a $2 million bid. Next bid? This will have to be corrected per the specs, but it's over a $2 million bid. Next bid? This will have to be corrected per the specs, but it's over a $2 million bid. Next bid? This bid is from Advanced Excavating Specialists LLC. The total cost to Calitz County is $1,799,597.03. This bid is from Advanced Excavating Specialists LLC. The total cost to Calitz County is one million, seven hundred and ninety nine thousand, five hundred and ninety seven dollars and three cents. Next bid. This bid is from Rotzchi Inc. Total cost to Calitz County is one million, five hundred and fifty one thousand, sorry, one million, five hundred and fifty one thousand, seventy dollars and sixty cents. Sixty cents. The last bid. This bid is from Tapina Inc. Total cost to Calitz County is one million, five hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and fifty seven dollars and fifty seven cents. And that is the conclusion of the bid opening.
Okay, thank you. Just head right to our agenda, Public Works.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Savannah Clement, Public Works. I know Debbie, the Treasurer, is here. She had an item to discuss, and because we have a couple of things to go over, I was going to let her go first, so.
Okay.
Debbie Gardner is on her way.
Sure, sure.
Good afternoon, Deborah Gardner, Calitz County Treasurer. The reason I was coming in today was to inform you of the Public Facilities District is planning on refunding the debt. I know you had heard about this before, but this resolution is going to be on the meeting of the twenty first for signature, as well as an amendment to the inter-local agreement that discusses this refunding. So I just wanted to bring it back after the new board is here to see if you had any questions, and just to let you know that that was going to be on there for the twenty first.
Is the refunding due to the fact that they didn't use the entire balance of the money that was given to them? What's the purpose for the refund?
Well, they, they borrowed money in two thousand and three to build the, build the conference center and do what they were doing with that. They refunded it in two thousand and twelve. They're refunding it now. The idea is, it's not like they got a chunk of money that they're not using. They get a sales tax rebate that helps pay for the debt service on the bonds.
So we're just essentially extending it for them?
Correct, and they have plans to do some future things that they'll be bringing back for more discussion later. But this is to refund the bonds that which will extend the payments and give them more money to work on projects that they're, the plans that they're planning on doing. They have, they need money to get the plans and all the things figured out. So they'll have more money to use now, having a less debt service payment for the year.
Is the refunding an advantage on the interest rate on the bonds, or is there just maintaining the existing amount of money we got and carrying it over?
It's ref, it's not, we don't know what the interest rates are going to be yet. This whole process, they'll go out for the, you know, the bids to get back on what we're going to end up owing in the new interest rate. So it's not really to reduce the interest rate. It's to extend the amount of time that they're going to pay this bond back. It's the same amount of money, they're not getting more money, they're just extending the length of time. But in the future, their plans for the future, they may re have new projects, and when they, they go out for new money, they might just refund this money and have a new additional debt that they would owe.
How much is the original amount of the funds and how much is left? What have they got that they're refunding?
Right now, the amount that they're refunding is one point one million. And to be honest, I don't have the original amount of debt that was borrowed.
The original res, lucid in here at four point eight eight zero, does that sound just under five million?
Uh, that could, yeah.
Tax general obligation refunding bonds, two thousand and twelve B.
So that in two thousand and twelve is when they refund.
Principal amount of four point eight, four point nine million, so maybe the original in two thousand and three was four point nine?
I, I don't know if that was when they refunded it, and that sounds like what it was refunded at in two thousand and twelve. But I'd have to go back and look.
And we have to do it this way because that's the way the Public Facilities District, is that how it's funded? We continue to extend that bond for them for future?
We, the county issued the bonds, that was the agreement at the time. And so we, the idea is where the county is obligated to pay the bonds if they can't, but they do get that sales tax money back that pays for the debt service.
It's a little bit odd. If they have a debt, an obligation, they get a refund of that, of the tax. If they don't have an obligation, they don't get a refund of the tax. It's not a new tax, it doesn't, if they don't get the refund, it doesn't mean everybody's taxes goes down. It's a tax of state charges, but they give counties a refund if they have this district and they have an obligation to pay. So it's kind of an oddball.
So they have to carry a debt to continue to get that?
Right, okay, right.
In, in the legislation, there's only so many years that this can, you know, go on. But there is new legislation that's being proposed to extend, extend that. And it, and it's not an additional debt yet, like, like Commissioner Dahl said, it's a rebate back on the state's portion that they get.
And the importance of if they, and they're always working to get the state. This originally started when they wanted to build the King Dome, I think, back in the day, and they developed this district so they could do these things. And the years matter because then it gives, it gives you bonding power. The more years you have, gives you more bonding power, obviously, so. So that's kind of where it started.
So they're working on extending the timeframe in general, or, because it looks like it's every ten or twelve years that we're redoing that? Are they looking to expand that? Or, I mean, how many times can we renew that? How, how many times can we do this?
Well, their plan is, they have a master plan that they're working on, and they do plan on issuing bonds for another ten, like possibly ten million by the end of two thousand and twenty five. So that would, if they did that at, at the time, it would, I don't know how long the bonds, they'd probably go out to, if this legislation gets passed and it's another fifteen years, it would go out to the length of that amount of time so that they can, but I think in this first part with that additional ten million that they're planning on doing, they want to do some upgrades to the conference center. There's a few things, I don't know what all the items are, but they'll bring that information back to you as this year goes by, because they, they're working on it.
Yeah.
The two things, as I understand it, that we need to be careful of, we need to realize if it ever defaulted, we're, we're on the hook.
Yeah.
And number two is it affects our bonding capacity as a, as a county, because it takes whatever they're using out of.
Ours.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't think ten is a big number, but, but we just need to be aware of that, yeah.
Yeah, with, because they, they want us to issue them for them, because it, that's just the way it works. And, yeah, it does affect our debt capacity. And those, some of the things that we have to take into consideration is, is the county planning, you know, they're, we're doing studies on, do we need new buildings? And if we need to borrow money, we need to take that into consideration. And any debt that is, that starts should come through the Finance Committee, which Rick is on it, the Auditor, the Treasurer, the Finance Director, and our Comptroller. So that everybody that's in the finance, understanding what's going on, you know, that we all think about, what, what is this going to implement to us? And, you know, what, are we missing anything? So if we start there, then, and that's part of what this is, is they came to the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee has given our, the recommendation for, to, to the board to go ahead and approve this, because we're already issued those bonds in the first place, and we're not, you know, doing anymore at this moment. But they do want to come back and talk to us about their plans for twenty five, two thousand and twenty five.
Just offer some perspective, maybe just generally what our current bonding capacity is?
We just looked at that, what was it?
It's, it's well over two hundred million.
Yeah, I knew it was in that range, so that kind of gives you some perspective.
Are there advantages to us? For example, where this project is a county-owned property or facility that we're upgrading, correct? The event center and that type of stuff?
There's, the county owns the property and the P F D owns the building.
Okay, I was going to ask if there's an advantage to going through the P F D as opposed to the county doing it themselves? And if so, what, what is it?
The, the, the P F D was formed in order to get those sales tax rebates. The county can't just do it on our own, we had to create the, the, the P F D.
Got it.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions? Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a mighty big jacket for the sun being out.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mike Moss, Public Services Director. You have an agenda in front of you there. We already did the bid opening on the top, sounds like we got eleven respondents, that's awesome. The first item we have is a North Pacific encampment. About a month ago, we received an email from a Commissioner, Commissioner Mortensen, about an encampment on the Calitz River. Yep. I don't know if it was all Commissioners, it came actually from a council member of the city Kelso.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so we.
Was the first.
Correct.
It's by, by the tracks there, and I don't know how much is owned by the railroad and how much is us.
Actually, the Sheriff's Office kind of took the lead role on that, and we got an update on Monday, so we figured to pass it on to you today. It's actually D N R land, and so they.
It's D N R.
Yes, they've been in contact with D N R the last few weeks. Went out late last week and gave notice. D N R has a camping policy of up to fourteen days, and after fourteen days, you have to vacate. So they posted the camp that they had noticed. I think they started the clock at that point there of fourteen days, or maybe a little less than that. So they'll be leaving fairly soon. I don't know if true, I'll go to D N R to see how often they can return, or anything like that, but I know they'll be leaving sooner or later, within the next fourteen days. And the Sheriff's Office is taking the lead role on that, so we'll get that area cleaned up for now.
How far does D N R run? I mean, do they go a hundred yards down and they're on?
It sounds like it's quite a strip of land going through there north, and it's right outside the city limits. And I believe when they approached the campers there, they, they knew where the city limits was located at and went right off of it and started on county property, or county, not our property, but D N R property. It's in, within the county rider or county limits, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, you're right, they could, and we thought the same thing when we visited with the Commissioner or Sheriff Department on Monday, that maybe they'll re-sprout upstream, five hundred yards, and there they are, so. But for now, the Sheriff's Office is working on that.
All right.
But we don't know what type of, how long do they have to be gone before they can start their?
That was the first question we asked, too, is like, is it like, do they leave for five days? And their fourteen day period starts all over again, they move right back, and we don't have an answer from, from the Sheriff's Office on that. So we'll try to do some research through D N R to see what their camping policy is. Because if they move right back in, I'm sure we'll hear, hear about it again, so. And I think Susan moved up for item number two.
Good afternoon, Susan Eugenes, County Engineer. Item number two is another exciting moving our project forward item. So I have all of the permanent and temporary easements for the Garlock Road Culvert Replacement Project. So there's an existing box culvert out there that is undersized, caused it's a fish passage blockage, it's reaching its end of life. So we have pursued funding. We've received grant funding to both design and reconstruct the replacements. It's through the Bryan Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board, so it's an eighty-five percent reimbursable contract. So I have today seven easements, four permanent and three temporary for the construction of this project. For your consideration to give, allow the Chairman to sign, so that we can then move into the construction phase of this project.
Can you help me understand the difference between a permanent and a temporary easement with regards to why we have one and not another in that situation?
So in the permanent easement, in this case, so this is a culvert replacement unlike the South Cloverdale. So in a typical road project, we, our older roads are built in a small right-of-way. They can be anywhere from forty to fifty feet to being able to do the work and contain the whole road prism. And so most people think of a road as the asphalt and the shoulders. Road prism section also includes the slopes and the ditches, so, and to the point where you tie in. So when we're doing these reconstruction projects, we go out and obtain additional right-of-way to include that entire road prism. Sixty is generally the number that we're going for, but there are locations where you have to go further, where you're going steep up a slope or down a slope. And, and some of those easements are obtained as slope easements. They're also permanent, so that we have the right to go in, and a few of these are permanent slope easements. So we have the right to go in and maintain the slope, but not to construct roadway on top of it. So in this case, we have three permanent easements, which includes the entire road where we could legally build a road. Two of them are slope easements, where there's a steeper slope that we need to construct and tie in, and we have the right to go and keep cleaning that up. And the other three are temporary. Now, in a large road corridor project, most of the temporary easements are to retie in driveways, driveways, and then to clean it up. In this particular project, we have temporary easements to go down into the creek. So we're accessing off of people's property to build down a roadway down into the creek bed, do our work down there, our foundation work, and then come back up. So when we're done with the work, we restore the property, grass it, or leave the gravel depending on the owner's desires, and then we no longer have the rights to use it. So that's the main difference. We have permanent rights, and sometimes we just need access to certain locations to get under. We do reserve enough right-of-way so that somebody going down in the future can get down to the structure itself, because this will require inspections and removing debris when we need to.
It was, explain to me one time, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the older easements weren't as wide, and, and it came through, and I think it was legislation that actually moved them out to sixty that, that counties take. And we made the decision, we don't take it until we get to the point where we're doing some, some reconstruction or something on the road. We just. We just, and I don't know when that decision was made, but we made a decision not just to go out and tell everybody we're taking their property. It only happens when we actually do some improvements on that that road.
So are easements only applicable if you're up against private property? Or what if it's state land or?
If it's state land, we still have to go through the easement process.
Okay.
And when we do these easements, just we do have independent appraisers that will appraise the property. We also have one in-house appraiser that reviews their work and we present it to them. Their rights include us paying for them to hire. There's a statutory limit that the county, if they don't like our appraisal, they can hire an independent appraiser themselves that works for them. And there is an allotment per state law of seven hundred and fifty dollars for them to hire an independent appraiser and give the property appraised during the negotiation process. So within Public Works, we have two, we call them right of way agents. One is has an appraisal background and the other works on the acquisitions. So they kind of split some of the duties, but they all, the one that does appraisals also works on acquisition. So what I'm here asking for is for you guys to approve.
They want authority from from both you that it's okay for me to sign these easements where I don't usually like signing anything unless by myself unless you guys say it's okay.
A motion for approval or?
Usually just a head nod.
Okay, you got my head nod.
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you. And we'll bring these these come through on the consent agenda as you saw, what nineteen for the Cloverdale project this past week?
I I've made a rule, I don't sign anything by myself unless you guys know about it, so.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is this the the place where the truck was under? Or is this a different? Okay.
So Dyke Road Barrier, this is where Dyke Road and Dyke Access Road meet by the slough off the Columbia River. This is past Walmart and the Woodland High School, if you take the straight stretch to the Dyke. The sheriff's office had a vehicle go in the water there three weeks ago, I believe. And apparently there's been a few that missed the turn there have gone into the slough. Unfortunately, they, when they went to recoup, recover that vehicle, they found another vehicle that's been missing for three years at the same location. So as a county agency, we decided we had put some barriers up short term. These are water filled barriers. I think they weigh about twelve hundred pounds or so per when they're filled. It's also on our guard rail repair or replacement or guard rail project list for this year or next year. Sorry, I misspoke.
So this particular lo- location, because it is on the Dyke, in order to place, because the Dyke was there first, in order to place guard rail there, we need to go through a whole process with the Dyking District and the Army Corps. So this wasn't easy. It doesn't impact the levee. We can put it out there to provide protection, short term protection while we go through the guard rail. Four oh eight process is what they call it. So the Dyking District has to buy on it, buy off on it, and then you have to get it approved by the Army Corps of Engineers.
Where's this location at again?
Well, you go to Woodland, the first exit there, the roundabouts, and you take a right towards the Walmart or the Woodland High School and continue towards the Columbia River.
Okay.
And then we, and then we go out, you know, it's one of these pictures, you can see the the road actually turned to the left there with some Chevron signs there. The slough is directly behind these barriers here.
Okay.
Which feeds into the Columbia River.
And not only.
In there for three years.
Yeah. Not only do people miss the turn and go into the slough, either coming the way that you're going towards the slough or coming the other way, they will miss this turn and end up in the farmer's field. I pulled the accidents for the past, I think I had eight years, and it was sixty forty of did they go off into the slough side? Or did they overcorrect so much they ended up in the farmer's field?
So we've added a reflective tape since this picture's been taken. And so we have pictures at nighttime, too, and it lights up pretty well, so.
Isn't it like a fifty mile and then it then it comes down to that corner, which is more like twenty five or something like?
That is correct.
And there is a speed curve warning sign that you do not see in these pictures prior to this curve with a big arrow. I believe it's a twenty-five mile per hour curve warning sign that we have out there.
So we figured giving updates since we we talked about this, I don't, four weeks ago or so.
Working with Army Corps, it'll take you years to get anything else different there.
And do we know whose truck was in there for three years?
Yes, they do, yeah. There was a missing person from three years ago.
Was he still in it?
Yes, he was.
He was in the truck?
Yeah.
Wow. Are these connected? I mean, so if you hit it, does it pull all of them or do you take two or three of them out?
It they are tied together. They're hinged, they're pinned together, but it's not pinned to the ground, so it'll flex.
So it would take, if they're filled with water, you said twelve hundred pounds, roughly?
Yeah.
Take a hell of a hit to go through that and get off the end of it? Okay.
Uh, annex update, I'll turn that over to Savannah. Those are the pictures, at least a part of the annex update is new doors, but I'll have her go there.
Um, so we were trying to, sorry, Savannah Clement, Public Services. We were trying to keep this meeting to kind of action items. Things we're working on now, but next week we plan on talking about some of where where our projects are currently at. So project status for public road, works, excuse me, parks, facilities, et cetera. So one of those action items is, if the new board's not aware, we did have two flooding incidents at the annex building that were separated by a couple of weeks. So on one side of the building, we're doing some remediation efforts and working with a contractor on getting the the items that were damaged out, redoing some of the walls and drywall, paint, et cetera. On the other side of the buildings, on the right hand side, we actually added a new door, which is for new access to where our Office of Public Defense Department will be located. So just a little history on that. That division has been renting space for quite a few years over at River Suites, which is the tall tower office building over on North First, I think. Or, okay. It turns a third.
Right around eight grand a month on that?
That's correct.
Yes.
Which is.
Trying to get out of there.
Yeah, yes. So we we received board direction to find different space. And using county owned space that we already have is obviously the best option that we saw at the time, and the board agreed. And so we were working on moving the Office of Public Defense into that building, making sure we were upfitting to design it to their needs, cost effectively, of course. So this this door was kind of step one to providing them secure access to a general office lobby space. Unfortunately for us, we had that space near complete to have at least part of their administration move into that until it had the water damage. So we're moving forward on things that we can do, which is the the door was one of them. Once the remediation company works on and fixes that side of the building, we'll be adding a wall, of course, cubicles, and hopefully move in some of those divisions. Right now, so you know, the the space is empty. We used to have a Noxious Weeds Division in there, and then Cog was also in there on the second floor. Both of those have since moved out. And we foresee the Office of Public Defense using that, those first two floors, primarily with the potential of having to go up into that third floor in the future.
So. Think Noxious Weeds will go back in when you're, you're gonna keep them where where they're at?
That's correct. You know, at at first, the answer was no, they were already in there. We didn't want to move anybody, you know, unnecessarily. And then all the water stuff happened, we had to move them out anyway. And coincidentally, if there's coincidences, um, we were just touring space for them the week prior to the the water stuff. So we had already kind of scoped out with them potential spaces for the future.
Okay.
And it just. Yeah, it wasn't under great circumstances, but.
Then this whole thing will be public defense.
That is correct, yes. It also saved, I think, a lot of money for us in the future because we were going to have to construct four additional office spaces. And now we we got four office spaces back, yes, in Noxious Weeds. So it did, it probably saved fifty thousand dollars, you know, by not having to construct new offices.
Okay.
And just so you know, the third floor is mainly used for storage from different departments. Some of it's caged in, I believe the assessors and the auditors office, maybe the treasurer's office has stuff there. But there's also other departments that's not caged. I say caged, it's like behind wires and locked. But some of the open spaces used by wazoo, master gardeners.
Building and planning.
Building and planning. I think Public Works has a few boxes up there we need to get out, so.
And parking, we're still good with working with the?
Yeah, we're gonna work across the street and also probably we're gonna clean up the museum parking lot. That's usually fairly empty. And we're gonna get some of the shrubbery out of there, gets the trees cut back so some better lighting in that parking lot and access that parking lot.
Okay.
We plan on broom- brooming it to to clean up the paved area, just make it better.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's currently the plan.
So I've heard that it that it flooded several times, but what caused the flood in both locations?
Okay, so there's two floods. The first one was on, I believe, Veterans Day. And it was, there were some temporary drains put in place by the roofing company that was putting the new roof in place. So that's the the first claims guy against the that company. Risk management's handling this this side of it. And then two weeks later, approximately, we had another leak, a larger leak mainly on the cog side. And it was a subcontractor that was hired by the roofer to redo some drainage that was in the third floor. And the drains were put in wrong incorrectly and flooded. The water actually ran down the drain pipe into the basement and then flooded from there up. So it came from the floor up, like through the carpet area, not through the ceiling. So there's less sheetrock damage that way, but there's still water penetration on the sheetrock on the walls from the base. So one was from temporary drains, the second one's from the the different drains that were in, put in incorrectly by a subcontractor. But both of those claims would go against the the roofing company, they'll have to figure it out with the their their sub. And the remediation process, from what we heard, the timeline is like fourteen to eighteen weeks. So I think we're like into week two, week three. So it's gonna be, you know, second quarter probably before we're able to get OPD out of River Suites and into this facility over here. So we've been paying eight to nine grand a month for the next.
Yuck, yuck.
So many months.
We're hoping to see suits running around and jet.
Yeah, yeah, I think they're pretty excited, too. Initially, they, you know, I don't know how excited they were to make the move because, you know, most of their clientele's in that region and not across the river. But once they started seeing the building was gonna like pretty much be theirs and they get to reshape it how they want it. Because right now, River Suites is really built where they're at now was an old medical office. So it's just like small little rooms connected with like their own sink. And it just doesn't work for them as a an office space. So they were kind of excited to get over here, but just, but we'll get them there, but it'll just take a little bit more time. And the last item I have, we have today is the Port of Longview Tenet Way sale. This is for, I should have said Tenet Way landfill, apologize. Public Works has been working on this for seven years. You may know about that project. We talked a bit about it with the commissioners. The Port of Longview is looking to add six rail lines, mainly starting at, starting at the old Tenet Way landfill, running to the port, going through six properties, including the counties. So we've been working on a purchase and sale agreement with the port. We've got permission last month from the commissioners to do some signing of the purchase and sale agreement. Just give you a heads up, all that paperwork has been turned into the attorneys on both sides. Now we're just waiting for escrow and closing, which we're guessing is gonna happen in the next month or two. The port's still working with the other property owners to get their sales documents put together and includes Turwa, Pac Fiber, other people, because I think that they have to go through like the Pac Fiber, Log Ponds. There's a lot of, uh, speed bumps in in front of the port before this project gets off and rolling. So there's still me, uh, when you come across the Couch River with the railroad bridge there, there's still only one line going across the river. So actually, right when you get across, it turns to Tenet Way landfill. That's when they'll start their six lines of additional lines of rail. It's mainly for storage capacity for them. And then they'll go across the river, then be able to queue up and into the storage unit or the the lines there and and get back into the main rail system. But they're running out of capacity and these rail lines, these train lines seem to be so much longer now. They need a lot more capacity on their side of the river there. So it's quite a major project. We're just a small piece of it at the the Tenet Way landfill. We sold right around a little less than nine acres, I think it turned out to be like eight point nine acres. And I think the number was like two point five million dollars, which the appraisal came back. And we had a third party look at the appraisal and agreed with those numbers. And so that's why I've been funded to the county. So and it goes into closure funds at the landfill. So it's nothing that we can really touch till the closure's done, which is about another twenty-five years, I believe, so. Just want to make sure you're aware that's moving forward and we're getting hopefully close to doing escrow and closing, so.
Are we currently setting funds aside for the closure of that landfill outside of this money?
We are legally obligated to on actually both landfills, both Tenet Way and Headquarters. And depending on what type of cell it is, so if it's a lined cell versus an unlined cell, they carry different liabilities and longer terms for commitment for closing them. So so yes, every year we actually transfer funds based off of the amount of of kind of cubic yards, right?
So that's correct for Headquarters. Tenet Way, we've already funded that fund, so we're drawing down what we put away when we were bringing in money. So that that's, so there's two different closure funds. One's the Tenet Way that we drawing down, except in this case, we're adding two million and then beyond the the Headquarters we're building up.
Do you, do you know, remember how much is in the Tenet Way right now, roughly? No, probably Sean questioned.
It is, yes. And I know at Headquarters, last year, I believe, we contributed about four million to the closure fund.
Yeah.
So.
He's not online, but we can find out.
Yeah, we can get you, we can get those numbers.
Well.
Next time we, we'll put it on agenda.
Perspective, yes, what what's in there? How expensive it is to close these things?
Correct, yeah, monitoring it. And that's one that deals with the 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 port there. There's, I should mention the the second piece of that, there's a relocation piece. So when we did the purchases and sales agreement, that was mainly for the land and the old easements for access. The second piece was relocation. We had a couple monitoring wells that we had to move because they're gonna be in the way of the rail lines. And and also relocation of any physical assets. So we had the old building that you could see right across from Swanson Market Field, the large building there. That's gonna be torn down, of course. So we had to get a smaller structure because there's certain documents you had to keep on site for a landfill. So we have a new facility over there, a smaller case facility, waterproof, that holds our documents. So that final number is like a hundred and forty-three thousand additional dollars that the port is paying the county for those relocation of the wells and that building.
Maybe if Sean doesn't mind having just send out a calculation on both as to.
Yeah, we have them.
I know you have them because I've seen. It's been a long project with the port, way before my time, yes.
A lot of documents, a lot of surveys and and potholing and figuring out what's lined and unlined. And yeah, it's it's been, it's been quite the project, so. So that's it for our our items today, but certainly open for any miscellaneous items from the board.
I do have one thing for you, only because we've talked about the encampment. I received a phone call today from a gentleman in Woodland off of, he's in Hox Prairie on Houghton Creek that feeds into the Lewis River right there by the golf course. He's got, he said he's probably got six transient people that have a camp down there on the creek. I know, I called Gina just to find out what we could do for, if it's a public health issue, because they're defecating in the creek and they got garbage all over the place. So I don't know, the process notify you guys, let you know and see what we can do. He was, he's very upset just due to the fact that one of the transients punched the neighbor's car door in and tried to pull her out and threatened to kill her. So he called because he's worried about leaving his wife and kids there. He's like, okay, this is now to the point where it's no longer just people hanging. He's like, okay, this is now to the point to where it's no longer just people hanging out down by the creek.
Gotcha. Yeah, we, fortunately for us, the Public Works, we have our own sheriff deputy that we utilize from the sheriff's office, uh, Deputy Harris. That helps us a lot in these situations like that, so you certainly give us the name and number and contact information and we can reach out. And, and, you know, it's a lot easier for us with Deputy Harris when, uh, in the sheriff's office, when it's on county-owned property or, um, but when it's on private property, uh, uh, it might be a little more blurred lines there. So I'll see exactly how they wanna approach this. Or, you know, if it's on the river itself, it may no longer be their property. Once again, it might could be a DNR or Fish and Wildlife, who knows what, exactly who owns that piece of property, so.
You, you guys are the ones.
Yeah, yep, please pass those on to us and we can work on those. And then we'll, we'll give you updates as soon as we get them.
Thank you.
Sadly, to say, in, even in my short two years, that kind of stuff, I've, I've seen it grow. I can drive around and see more and more of it is, and I don't think it's gonna, yeah, gonna stop under the current way things are handled, yeah.
What's crazy about it is it's quite a ways up the river.
Yeah.
How did they get all the way, you know, I'm, that's a hike to get up to where he's at, but they do.
We do, we deal a lot with, uh, stuff left in the right of way, mainly RVs from homeless and, and also boats. Usually off of trailers, but a lot of RVs, they'll, they'll use them till they can't use them anymore. They'll usually tow them to a white spot in a, in a county road and then, uh, leave them there. And we try to move them ASAP because the longer they sit there, the more they get vandalized by others and they usually set on fire. And it's a lot harder for us to deal with the aftermath of that than just moving them right off the bat. There used to be state money, well, there is state money annually to help us get those moved, Carl's towing helps us get them to a different location. And then you may have seen over by the, the Tenet Way landfill, there's a third party that's disassembling, uh, RVs. And so they, some, some of our projects or, uh, RVs get towed there from Carl's. After they have so many days they have to sit for the actual owner to claim them or not. But that money is just the annual June to June or June to July, July to June money. And it usually runs out before the end of the year. And so this time of year, we've already gotten notice that they don't have money until the next calendar or the next, uh, budget cycle. So it's harder for us, this time of year, a lot of times we'll tow them only to our outlying shops and hold on to them till the next cycle comes in place, there's additional funding to move forward with getting them disassembled and taken care of.
It's been nice having this, whoever that person is, because we didn't really have an outlet.
We did not, yeah, we actually searched for, I know Clark County is a third party out of Portland, we're looking at piggybacking on that. But it was, uh, six to seven thousand dollars per unit for them to come get it and dispose of it. And it's a lot cheaper route, especially when the state was paying part of that bill for us. So hopefully it's somewhere in Olympia that gets more funding. And so, because we're getting more and more of these every single year, that there are certain times by time it goes back in the cycle where we have funding to, to push these back out again, we may have three or four per shop waiting.
Yeah.
Boats are a little bit easier for us to dispose of, uh, but RVs darn not.
We're just seeing more and more of it, yeah.
Yeah, sometimes you'll see them on, you know, the cities and the states dealing with exactly the same thing as us. So you see what you just hope, is that on state property, is that on county property, who has to deal with this one here?
Well, even driving out to my place on the west side, there used to be an old house and I always joke because I'd say, oh, he got a new roof, well, it would be a blue tarp or then it'd be a black tarp. But he's had some property and now all kinds of things have moved in, but it's just, you're seeing it, I don't, it's hard, I don't know what you do.
Yeah.
Anyway. Okay. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I thought I might, you wanna set these, those up here and I'll sign those?
Yeah.
Thought I might go over a couple of things and then we can get into community assignments that were kind of left for us. One, Dennis had worked on this, it looks like he was given a charge to work on this in two thousand seventeen by the Board of Commissioners at, at the time. It was, they had concerns with some of the accuracy of the census map. And so he worked on that and he turned it in the last day he worked. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I just wanna bring it to your attention, maybe we wanna review it and, and, and next week decide where we wanna send this. It looks like it's fairly simple, they're just asking the Census Bureau to maybe look at some changes. But I don't know if you wanna review it before, I don't wanna just send this in until you've all had a chance to.
I'm ready, I'm gonna do that thing and I'm, I'm not sure where it's going anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I read it too and I, I couldn't really see that there was anything pressing to be done.
It makes any major changes, anything, it looks like he's trying to take out dead end roads and things like, things like that.
He no, uh, no population blocks.
Yeah.
What's the definition of a block? Big land, I mean, it talks about big land in the median strip.
Yeah.
On the highway.
I didn't see any numbers in here that would really be anything significant to any one of our, our districts, did you?
Yeah.
So if, if you're okay with it, I might just, we'll send this in and fulfill that obligation he was put under in two thousand seventeen.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Uh, the other one, and I don't know if you were in the audience when the gentleman come in and he asked us to look at stricter ordinance on that. So. Kind of the process, and, and we gave him the process, you know, send it to us, we'll take a look at it. If we think it's, we wanna move forward with it, that's our, our decision. If we, if we do, then I would probably ask Legal to take a look and how that would look in an ordinance. And then, once you have that, you have to have a workshop and people have to talk, have a chance to discuss it. If, uh, if something we really don't even wanna go forward with, we can just stop it here, but.
Who was that telling you about?
He, he had, uh, he was trying to get more control on people just target shooting and times a day and stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Do you remember that?
Yeah.
Yeah. I. I waffle on, on, on that stuff because I don't. I, I worry about enacting something that affects people trying to do, you know, not causing a problem. Cause the people causing the problem usually are gonna change, it, it's been my experience, they don't change anyway. And I don't wanna enact something and all of a sudden, a person that's just doing the right thing gets in trouble because they're doing the right thing.
Yeah.
That's what I, that's where I hesitate.
Yeah, and there's, you know, I, I know he, he's talking about the cowlets and, I think he mentioned the toodle in here also somewhere. But. My issue with it is, on here, he says that it's okay to, uh, if you're hunting legally within the, the WDFW regulations, that that wouldn't apply. Well, duck hunters hunt on the river. And they're shooting, you know, shotguns on the river. So it is a line, where do you draw that? I mean, you guys can do it, but you guys can't, type of a thing. And that, I, I kind of have an issue with that also. Although I, I do understand his concern and I wish people were more responsible with the discharging of firearms. Cause I, uh, all of us, I'm sure, would hate to see something happen, have an accident happen. But to your point. Chairman, yeah. If, if criminals obeyed the law, we wouldn't have criminals, cause we got plenty of laws.
Yeah.
Um, ducks, ducks fly, and so they can't face police, are good, right?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I might suggest that it may be worthwhile to ask, uh, Legal to just take a look at it under the guise of, is it gonna, how big of an effect does it make to?
Yeah.
Are we restricting law, lawful acts to an unreasonable point?
Yeah, I'm good with that too.
Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll, I'll ask him to do that and then depending on what they answer, then what decides what to do with that. Okay. I think we kind of talked about community assignments, I think they kind of, once they're a little serious, it might be easier than you think. Looks like. Mine are just the green ones, right, Susan? Okay, you have a couple there for Assessor, right?
Yes.
So, and. Do you need to not write all these? I don't see any notaries, so I think these are probably good to go then. Double check before you walk out, make sure you didn't miss anything. Okay, so you, you gave us a list of what everybody was on right now. And, and you'll notice in some of them, uh, previous commission felt that there needed to be an, an alternate. And you still also see alternate names on there, so. And I know. I don't know exactly where you go, I think you had a couple that you, we talked about if you just wanted to take what had previously done and then you had a couple sw- switches, I, I think you wanted to do.
Uh, we, we did originally talk, uh, Commissioner Mortensen had the, uh, Area Agency on Aging and Disabilities. And, uh, not that Commissioner Farrell would have more of a, um, relationship with that, uh, with the people on that committee. But we did talk about switching that one to Commissioner Farrell.
So you wanna put Commissioner Farrell on that one?
Yeah, I'll be the representative, but you're gonna be an alternate or who's gonna be the alternate?
I think, uh, I don't know that, well, I think Dennis did step in for him once in a while, so. So that probably needs one and I don't, I don't mind. You can put me as alternate on that. Building and planning, I, I've been doing that, it doesn't, um, it doesn't really need an alternate, you guys are welcome to sit in on those, it's not that formal committee. It's, uh, you're welcome to sit in on those at any time. I've never been called to a Castle Rock to the regional water system one yet.
It's only been two years?
Yeah. And, uh, clean air, was that one you wanted to keep with the district, like you there? So it would be Commissioner Rader.
Yep.
And then Commissioner Farrell. Couch nine one one, I've been doing that and then Dennis was the backup, probably makes sense for, uh, you.
Yeah.
Because most of that is done in Longview, that's a big part of it anyways.
So Farrell.
The canvassing board I required to do. Transit Authority, uh, Commissioner Weber took that because the big part of that is in the Longview area. They have a meeting today at four, I was planning to go over there, but just because it's, it's so new. I'll be the alternate, yeah. Cog. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Disability Advisory Board, okay. Commissioner, you can be the alternate.
Sure.
Okay. EDC. I, I think that'd probably be a good one for you. Emergency management, I think Commissioner Mortensen was doing that, I don't know that he had a lot of, they had a lot of commitment, meeting commitments on that.
Okay.
The Fair Board, I, I did, there was three of them that I did because they all kind of tied in with the Public Facility Board. It all dealt with the Expo Center, so I was on the Fair, the rodeo and the PF, PFD. And be honest with you, I've never been to a Fair Board meeting. They don't have them.
Okay.
That often. Uh, behavioral health.
Take that one.
You're gonna take that one?
Sure.
You didn't know what you wanted to do with the Castle Longview Board of Directors?
Even word director. I'll make it, I'll let it, it happened.
Okay.
And these assignments, are, are they, are they fluid? I mean, yeah, we, we can make a change at any time.
Yeah. Anytime during the year, if you think you wanna fit in a different category, more than happy to.
All right, Justice Council, where does that consist?
That's, uh, all law and justice folks, it, it kind of, I don't know exactly when it started, but it's a Zoom meeting, the trouble with it, it's like at seven thirty in the morning. And, and, uh, the commissioner is the chair of the meeting, although there's another person that calls the meeting and sends out the notices. And it, it, it's kind of a round table for the, uh, just to get an update on what's happening in each, each, each of the jurisdictions. A lot of times when, uh, I was the one at the beginning, when I became chair, uh, Commissioner Weber took that. It usually is. Other than it being early, it's usually thirty minutes, it's not a.
And who sets the agenda for that, where, do the judges, who's in on that?
Yeah, the, the, there's really no, if you have, the agenda is pretty much, you just go around to all the police jurisdictions, kind of, kind of find out what's happening, if they have something specific. Like, uh, one thing that would have been specific is when we had to take over the Humane Society, there was probably some conversation on that when they. So there, there could be things that come up.
I, I don't mind.
The jail's also part of that and Marin always calls in on that.
I don't mind doing that.
Okay.
I'll help Commissioner Farrell out with the seven thirty in the morning thing.
Okay, so the law and justice, you're gonna do?
Sure.
Lot Library, I've never been called to that, but that's a chair thing, I guess. Lodging Tax Advisor Committee, I'm, I'm on that, I'm actually, the, whatever commissioner is on that is the chair of that. But Kim Bocat is the one that really runs, runs that and schedules those meetings. They're as needed, I've been on maybe two or three of them. It's basically a, a, uh, there's amount of tax that the, the lodging pays and that fund goes into tourism type dollars. And there's a small one for small events and then there's a larger, larger fund for bigger funds. And Kim, they set up a scoring system, it goes through a scoring system. And what you do on the committee is they'll run through the projects, you decide which ones you wanna, wanna fund. Hasn't been a big deal the last couple of times because there's been enough funds, uh, to fund basically everything there. And although they have at times turned down projects, they just didn't think met the, met the criteria. Again, it's not a big time consumer. CAP, Commissioner Weber is doing that.
What's a month?
Yeah. You can work that one?
Yeah.
And the Fish Recovery Ward, Commissioner Weber did that, it wasn't, uh, any standard timely meeting.
Oh, see if I can make it work.
I, I would like to take that one if you're good with it, yeah.
You got it.
I got, I think I got that one.
Huh?
I got North County, cause that's District One, the majority of it, right? All of it is, isn't it, up the Lewis River?
Think so, I think that's why Aron had it.
Yeah, I'll take that one.
Noxious weed, they meet, uh, Noxious weed, they meet, uh, they do meet once a month.
I'll keep that one.
Park and Recreation, Commissioner Mortensen.
Yep, I got that. Do you know, uh, Chairman, if that, a- am I working with the the city? Parks and Recs managers also, or is it something completely different? No?
This is. How many sit on that board, do you remember? Yeah, there there's a few that sit on that, but.
Uh, there is, there are quite a few people who sit on that, um, but it is primarily just volunteers. Um, I believe there is a city council member from Kelso on the park board, um, but they're not representing the city. I think it's just volunteer.
Didn't we put Eric Halverson on there, Tim, and he's from Longview too? Maybe not. Uh, the PFD Board, I've been, uh, dealing with that, I'd like to hang on to. We've been working on projects on that, rodeo. Parks and Recreation.
I can do that one.
I've been doing Silver Lake because that's my area out there. Although, really, who handles most of that is the WSU Extension. Uh, solid waste, equipment land facilities, the government's committee.
I got that one.
Think, uh, that one's major enough, when they call those that, uh. Commissioner Farrell doesn't mind being the alternate, I think that'd be.
Okay.
Would be good to have an alternate there.
Solid Waste Equipment Land Facilities Governance Committee, okay.
Yeah. That's basically made it up of the city managers, a lot of it from the different cities, yeah. And it doesn't get, and Sean, Sean's gonna call that meeting if it if needed, right, so, yeah. I think this, the Regional Airport one is one, uh. Aron did, I think that's a fun one, so whoever wants to take that, I think that's a good one.
You wanna do that or?
Yeah, I'll do it. I went to the one prior to Aron leaving, so.
I think we've got a pretty good, I'm a big. I think we got a good facility over there. Uh, the collaborative. Dennis was was doing that, I I'll be honest with you, I struggle with collaborative. Cause there's umpteen million people on there, not really, but seems like it. And it just doesn't seem like it moves very fast, so.
What's the purpose of that committee?
Say, what's the goal then if it's?
It's that whole, uh, from the the volcano, that whole. Area, the.
The Toodle River Valley, um, so they talk about holistic approaches and we should be engineering with nature. And it consists of, so the Army Corps attends. Fish and Wildlife, Ecology. Uh, Castle Rock, we have, uh, private citizen that that attend. Um, so they talk about a lot of what's been going on and ideas for moving forward. Um, there's a little, a lot of little subcommittees, are they, they're three hour meetings once a month. I think they're Thursdays from nine to noon, or they might have moved into Wednesdays.
Are they, did they just have one of these, uh, recently with regards to the flow of the Callets, now it's eating away the bank?
It's it's possible.
I think they did, and I went to that one.
Yeah, I've missed a lot of them unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that one, I mean. I'll take it.
I I went to one and almost shot myself.
Sounds like I got something to look forward to then.
If if you get burned on it, I'll I'd be happy to jump in there.
Turwa, three rivers, regional. I think that's a good organization, that's a. Whoever wants to sit on it.
Rivers Regional Wastewater Authority.
So what it says, a vice chair on here, is that the vice chair of that committee? Okay. So who'd we decide that one?
Well, it was Commissioner Mortensen.
I, yeah, I'll do it.
They're we- well-run, so it's it's pretty easy. Asmat. I don't think there's a ton of those.
I think, I think we talked about, didn't we talk about you taking that one, Steve?
Yeah, I think I'll 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 do that.
Okay. I do, we heard, I do the finance. Washington County's Insurance Fund, WCIF, that's really, uh, our risk management stuff. Uh, I think Aron. All that kind of stuff.
Yeah, when I, when when we talked about it previously, he felt that that would be a good one for me with my background.
Uh, let me digress a little bit since that's, uh, if you're talking, that's our health insurance and stuff. I, and I don't know when, but I'd like to have a wo- workshop and bring in, uh. Kirkpatrick. They do a a self-funding thing that a lot of companies around here use, and I think it's at least worth looking at. So I'll probably try and schedule them at some point in time, just so they can kind of tell you what it's about. Because health insurers, our premiums just keep going.
Yeah, they're not.
Crazy, crazy. He sat down and talked to me one day and it really kind of opened my eyes that I think there's different, better ways to do it.
Yeah, there's a lot of different options out there as opposed to just your conventional insurance company. What I think's funny is is you take your glasses off, I put mine on, when I take mine off, you put yours on.
And I sit in the middle and leave mine on.
Legislative Steering Committee, I can hang on to that, but I s- I I think I suggested to Commissioner Farrell that he should be the alternate. I think he'd be the good alternate on that. I got a five hour Zoom meeting tomorrow. Yes, sir, they're most active, this committee is most active at the start of session when bills are getting dropped and stuff, so I'll have. Like every two weeks, they'll have a meeting up in in Olympia and kind of go over them, they're like a half a, half a day. Meeting, so the first part of the year, probably through March is is the busiest part for this committee and then. Then it kind of slows down, but.
What are your, what are your thoughts on that? I I I kind of have, I don't want to say mixed feelings, but after we went to that training, um, up there, I felt that there. There could be some value in in the future, but I'm just not sure how to, how to quantify the value to the county.
I get, I get, I get frustrated with it, to be honest with you, because a lot of it is. You know, there's thirty-eight counties, so so them to do things to satisfy Callet's County means a little bit. Probably not feasible, but a lot of it is, uh. It's always about funding, it's always about how do we get more funding to the counties, or how do, how do we get more road tax, and it's always about. More and more regulation and stuff, we need affordable housing, so we'll support that you tax Airbnbs and stuff like that. And I'm more, if I think you guys know me enough, I'm more, well, let's, how about we get rid of some regulation? Do we ever do that? And so I get frustrated with it because I don't totally agree with the approach, I understand it because that's what they do up there, but.
Are they involved in any, in any way helping or representing different departments throughout the county, or is it just the Board of Commissioners?
You know, I, uh. The the function is for commissioners to be involved. But a lot of the stuff they do, they'll do things that affects Susan and in Public Works and stuff like that, and that, and they will get. Input from Crab and those type of folks as to what to do there. I think it has, it probably, it it's an attempt to give a collaborative voice to counties to talk to Olympia. Rising Credit Unions, we had a collaborative voice that would talk, although we didn't always agree with what they were talking on.
And our, we paid dues for that, I remember them talking about that.
For that, and that's one of the, that's one of the dues, uh, we'll have, I think, coming in sometime this month. Cog is coming in because if you remember, we okayed Kathy, you put all those dues things in the budget, but. With the caveat that we would have a vote, the new board would get to vote on those as they came, came due, so. We will get, you'll get a chance to look at that. For cog. She's gonna bring all, okay, okay.
So do you actually go to Olympia to attend that, or do you do it by Zoom?
A lot of times I go to Olympia because I don't like Zoom so much. Tomorrow I'll be on Zoom because I have. Appointment, it won't give me time to get up there and then I want to be back for something else, so, so I'll just Zoom it tomorrow.
Reason I ask is if you, if you went to it, could I observe on?
Oh, absolutely.
Without the conflict of open public meeting that.
Absolutely, there there's a lot of, a lot of counties will, you're, you won't be a voting person, but but there's a lot of people that will sit in and and watch it, yeah.
So the 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 steering committee is.
I can send you the link if you felt like popping in tomorrow.
I could watch it too? Yeah, please. So the steering committee's purpose is to talk about what legislative legislative action they're gonna want to pursue.
We went, we go through a, a, once a year, they go through a process, and I spent two days in a, in it, up in, it would happen to be in Shelton. And, uh, they go over, they have this staff identifies issues and they'll give you a list of. Fifteen, twenty, whatever it is, and they weed, they weed it down, go through the processes to. They try to get like the top three or four that are really important to counties. And that's, they won't not pay attention to the other issues, but those are the ones that will get the focus. So we go through this whole voting process to get down to these, uh. Handful of directives that we want them to really pay attention to, although when you sit in the meeting, you'll have. This multiple page thing of all the bills that are going in and and they have different people assigned to different. Uh, like Alex Swanson works on transportation issues and somebody else works on, one of their lobbyists works on medical issues and. And they'll go through all the things that are in there and what they're doing on them, but then they'll really try and focus on the ones that we, we told them are our priorities.
I remember, and Steve, maybe you can help me clarify this, when we were at that training, they talked about that they. Do they have their own risk pool? Or do they help us manage our risk pool? I thought they said have their own, don't they? Do you know? Rick? Risk management, I thought that they had a risk pool that we could utilize if ours doesn't cover it for some reason. Uh, and I could be totally off on that, but for some reason I thought that.
I got that.
Yeah, and I was wondering if we've ever had to use it, or if we've ever used their risk pools as opposed to.
Not time where, I know they, I know they led a couple lawsuits in, you know, for counties.
Yeah, I I.
It it, they've kind of, this, since I've been on there, it's been in a restructure because. The dues were based on county size. And and so King County was, they didn't feel. That enough attention was paid to King County issues for the dues they were paying, so they basically pulled out, so you've seen discussion on how to restructure some of those. Dues and. And handle that.
Yeah, they made it sound when we were there like they, due to the restructuring that they had, that King County was actually gonna be coming back on board. That's what it sounded like.
I I think, you know, that's that's a goal, I haven't seen it happen yet.
Well, based on your earlier comments, are any of their top fifteen or twenty concerns ever focused on elimination of laws and regulations? I mean, that, I would think that'd be in the top five anyway.
That's my frustration.
Eliminate this, this, all the bureaucratic crap.
Yeah, well, and and it's not just my frustration, uh, let's. Take the one deal on, uh, affordable housing where they want to tax Airbnbs and Verbos. And the theory behind it is they're stealing rental properties and, uh, the gal from Yakima, uh, who is quite vocal, so. It's not, uh, uh, a fa- it's not that they're stealing. Restrictions are stealing rental properties, all the rules and regs, and so we don't have a. And others will talk about it too, we don't have an affordable housing crisis, we have a regulation crisis, but you can't get. All the counties to. Get on board for that, so, but but there is some of that talk there, and I know there's frustration for other counties in that same issue. But in the time I've been on it, I I've only seen, how do we get more money?
More regulations and more money.
So those list of concerns, do you know, how's that list generated? I mean, do they give you guys a survey and say, what are your top five?
Yep, they will send out a, they sent out a survey and all the counties are, uh, welcome to, uh, list what they want. One of the big things, and it it's been there for a long time, is this one percent cap on. Real estate, they want that raised, there's a lot of counties that want that raised.
Yeah, well, that was a voted on constitutional change, right? And so somehow you have to override the voters.
And that's, uh, one of the big things for the big counties, King and. Pearson, Snohomish, they want that, a lot of them want that raising. And I'm going, no, I don't need a raise.
Yeah, that list that the we talked about, when they, we were up there, was, uh, they wanted to raise that to three percent, they wanted, uh, three percent. Uh, what was the other one?
Well, no, originally, didn't they say they wanted it at five or six, and they were gonna settle at three? That's what they said, and I I was blown away by that.
Yeah, you go, well, if you're gonna negotiate, you always gotta start high.
So, anyway, I I I I'll I'll continue to do that and I'd welcome Commissioner Fellows. Alternate and maybe next year we can switch that out and you want to take that on or whatever. But then you're always welcome to sit in and listen to them, you just, e- except for the annual meeting, then all commissioners can vote. This Legislative Steering Committee, just the one that we appoint can vote, but you can sit in and listen.
Yeah, so when you get a chance, shoot me that link. And that's this, when, this Friday?
Thursday.
Tomorrow? What time is it supposed to start?
Noon, noon to five.
Well, it says eight AM to seven PM. Am I reading that wrong?
Oh, I don't know what that.
Okay, so noon to five tomorrow.
Is tomorrow is when they have it set up. I'll, I'll, uh. I'll forward it to you, well, I'll probably send it to Kelly, she can forward it to you, but I, I'll also send a note up to Paul Jewell that. Uh, that you two, uh, may be joining in to listen. Okay. I don't know what the Workforce Development Council does, although Commissioner Weber's on it, looks like a.
I can do, I can take it.
Executive VOCC, you wanna do that? I don't see when it meets.
Says quarterly, but.
But, yeah.
Yeah, I can take it.
I can, I can do it or you can do it, I'm I'm easy.
You wanna take it?
I'll I'll keep it. And see where it goes.
Okay. You got it? At at some point in time, I I uh. What I need to do before that, there's a request to me before I do that, is to make sure. Because if we wanted to go that route, it's really important HR be on. Board, so I need to make sure. I need to sit down with Jessica first, yeah. Hey, anything else?
Uh, are we? How are we, are we divvying up departments? As far as liaisons between departments, are we? I I, I don't know the benefit one way or the other, you would know, you've already, you know, you've served for two years.
I don't think we've ever really had.
We've kind of changed the liaison meeting to. The Monday meetings where everybody comes now. So you're getting. Each department. At least once a year in here. So before it was divvied up, the departments were divvied up through the each Commissioner. And and now we kind of changed, we got rid of that liaison meeting and and everybody's just coming and doing the budget one. But if you want to do something different.
So if you want to talk to one of, we just go.
Just go over and chat with them.
Okay, I'll give it that.
Yeah. Okay. I think we're good, we will adjourn, thank you.